Good evening. I'd like to call to order the July 22th Lansing City Council meeting. To order, Clerk Swop, would you please call the roll?
Certainly, Councilmember Brown.
President.
Councilmember Carter.
Here.
Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Cost. Councilmember Pelavonaglu. Councilmember Spatafor.
President.
There are eight members present in quorum, and we are to the meditation and pledge of allegiance.
Okay. At this time, we are to meditation and pledge of allegiance. Does anybody on council have anybody they'd like to have remembered at this time? Okay. Seeing no, we are to a moment of silence and followed by the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You here for your approval of the council proceedings of July 8?
Councilman Cost.
I would move, thank you, President Garza, I would move the July 8, 2024 meeting minutes as written.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Do you have any questions or comments from council? Seeing none. All those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All disapposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Okay, we are to special ceremonies and presentations. We have the Lansing Gateway Corridor Improvement Authority Development and Tax Increment Finance Plan.
Vice President Hussein.
So I actually, I see Clea Washington and Mr. Alex Watkins in the gallery. So if you two actually would like to come through these double doors right here, you can actually take a seat, the table to our left and to your right. We appreciate that. Also make sure that the green light is on so we can hear you. Just as a quick preview, we have, in the city of Lansing, we have four corridor improvement authorities. The last two were actually established back in December of 2019, and that's South MLK, as well as Grand River, which is now known as the Lansing Gateway Corridor Improvement Authority. In any event, corridor improvement authorities, they are allowed per state statute in qualifying communities. The idea is that they really give cities such as ours a mechanism to not only plan for commercial improvements along qualifying certain corridors, but also to fund some of those improvements along those corridors. So again, this particular corridor was established back in, or I should say, improvement authority back in 2019. And then, of course, a few months later, COVID was upon us. And so it was difficult to populate the board. Last couple of years, though, I did see a populating of the board, work through the development plan, the TIF plan. So my understanding is later tonight, we'll be establishing a public hearing. But you all are here to present the development and TIF plan. So we certainly appreciate you guys being here. Thank you.
Tess, Tess, okay. I just want to make sure the presentation is also on the screen for your...
Could you make sure the green light is on?
It is on.
Okay, thank you.
I'm just soft spoken. My apologies.
City TV, there you go.
So thank you, Councilman Hussein. And as you said earlier, my name is Clea Washington, and I'm the Community Development Fellow at the Lansing Economic Development Corporation, and I am presenting on behalf of the Lansing Gateway CIA Development and Tax Increment Plan, our Development Tax and Increment Financing Plan. Unfortunately, Councilman Hussein stole some of my spill already. So as you're saying, Lansing Gateway was established in 2019, previously known as North Grand River Avenue. Just want to clarify that for any confusion. Same corridor boundaries, same CIA board, just a different name. And then, next slide? Okay, rolling next slide, stay on there. So this plan has obviously been viewed by the Lansing Gateway Corridor Improvement Authority and recommended for your consideration. This presentation will just give you a high-level overview of what you will find in the actual development and TIF plan. And so, next slide. So today's presentation will be broken up into four parts. This is similar to the sections you will find in the actual development and TIF plan. And so we'll start with the introduction to the Lansing Gateway Corridor, then discuss community engagement and the planned development process. And then next, we'll discuss proposed projects on the plan. And then we'll finish with the tax increment financing projections for that corridor district. And so I'll start by first defining some key terminology that will best help you understand today's presentation. So next slide. So first being, what is a corridor improvement authority? So corridor improvement authorities are legal entities established by municipal governments, and they're organized through the board of directors that facilitate corridor improvements. And these corridor improvement authorities are usually outside that traditional downtown area. So make sure we're spreading the growth outside those areas. And so they're primarily funded by tax increment financing, which captures increases in taxes within that district, and then reinvest those funds into development projects to revitalize that commercial corridor. And next slide. So now I want to introduce you to the current board members that make up the CIA board and their respective positions. There are currently five out of the eight positions filled, with two of the board members having both a residential and a business connection with the corridor. And today, we have Chair Robert Bernstein and Vice Chair Diane Hartwell here today and support of the project. You guys can wait if you want. There you go. So next slide. Next I showcase the boundaries of the corridor, which runs primarily along North Grand River Avenue. It starts on the west side of the corridor with bravery at the city limits. Like I said, running primarily along North Grand River Avenue. And then it stops at the Old Town District on the east side of the corridor. And then this graphic also highlights key landmarks in the area like the Capital Region International Airport, parks and commercial businesses in that respective area. And then next slide. And so this next graphic is just another map of the corridor. Here, I will highlight some of the north and south branches you'll see on the corridor. So although it does primarily run along North Grand River Avenue, you'll see branches on the Capital City Boulevard, North MLK, Grand River when it turns into a bridge, and then Turner Street. And this next graphic on the next slide is just a graphic from the city of Lansing's comprehensive plan, showing transportation changes for this area. Things like intersection improvements, streetscape changes, bus stop enhancements in other areas that could be done within those corridor boundaries to improve that area. And so before we move on to the next section of this presentation, are we all good with the introduction to the corridor? Beautiful. Next slide. So now we're going to get into the actual development process of the plan. So as we said earlier, the CIA was established in 2019. Mayor Andy Shaw proposed, the city council approved. And from there, in 2023, that's when the development process started to really take off. So starting with an area study that was performed by a Michigan State Practicum student. That area study provided us with key data that basically helped us understand how to best improve the area. Things like demographic data, land use, mobility information, case studies, and more. So we make sure that when we do develop that plan, that we know what's needed in that area. And then from that point on, the city of Lansing brought on a CEDOM fellow, a community development fellow. That's me. And so that'll be the person that actually facilitates the development of the plan itself. And to start that process off, I did a community input survey. And so that helped me gather, gather an understanding of what individuals who have an actual relationship with the corridor would like to see in that area. We had responses from residents, business owners, commuters, people that work in the area, et cetera. And so with that, we use all that information to create a well-informed and strategic plan that you have in front of you today. We can go to the next slide. So within the development and TIF plan, you'll find development projects broken up into four categories. Those categories are based on the Michigan EDC's Main Street model. And so that includes design, which focuses on physical enhancement and aesthetics of the corridor. Economic reconstruction that focuses on supply elimination, supporting and actually attracting businesses to that corridor. Promotion and marketing, helping create a sense of identity for the area. And then organization, it just kind of explains how we should go about doing the corridor revitalization process. And so next slide. So here are just some of the proposed projects under their respective categories. And I would like to add here that the board, the CIA board, has been able to make strides in some of these areas, utilizing some of the ARPA funds that they have available to them now until they can actually gather or capture some TIF financing to fund these projects. One thing that is either being done early this week or is currently done, street sign toppers are being installed along the corridor boundaries. We have a landscaping effort underway and other signage also underway. And then now that we have a better understanding of the potential projects that are being proposed in this plan, we'll have a better understanding. So we'll talk about funding until we can go to the next slide. So here are the different funding sources the CIA could utilize to fund their development projects. The main one being that tax increment revenue, which we'll explain more in the next slide. So like we said earlier, the CIA district was established in 2019. But in order to utilize tax increment financing, they need to establish a TIF district. So once that TIF district is created, we'll go about adding up all the current taxable revenues within that district of real property within the district boundaries. And that will give us that baseline tax base that you see at the bottom of this graph. That baseline tax base is the amount of taxable revenue that will continue flowing to the existing taxable body. So that'll be the city of Lansing, Ingham County, and others. And that'll just go to fund the traditional medicinal needs of the area. And so from there, the city of Lansing, or not the city of Lansing, my apologies, the Corridor Improvement Authority will facilitate development projects in the area in hopes of not only improving the development of the area, but also increasing the tax revenue generated within that area. And what that does is it allows the CIA to capture that new tax revenue generated over that 15-year period to fund public improvement projects. And so just so we're clear, by establishing the TIF district, we are not establishing any new taxes. Instead, we're just reinvesting the tax revenue that's generated within the district to fund improvements for that specific district. Are we good there before I move on? Beautiful. So next slide. So on this slide, you see TIF projections for Lansing Gateway CIA at a 2.5 growth rate. And so, and like you see there, that baseline value, we're not capturing anything. But from that point on, then that increment starts to come into play, and it continues to grow over that 15-year period. And so this is just giving you a better idea of how the funding could work at this growth rate. You can see on the side, to the side of the graphic, what the total capture would be over the 15-year period and what the city of Lansing's contribution would be based on the courage military. And any questions before I move on? Okay, well, next slide. And that basically gives you a high-level overview of the Lansing Gateway CIA's development and TIF plan. And if you guys set the public hearing, we will do our due diligence by making sure the public is aware through certified mails and posting on the corridor, other efforts like newspaper articles and stuff like that. Are there any questions?
Well, thank you for your presentation. I guess typically I open up for other questions, but I don't want to forget this. I see that you have three board positions available. Can you tell me what qualifies and disqualifies somebody from applying to that?
Yeah, so they obviously have to have some type of relationship with the corridor, whether they work on the corridor or within that 500 feet, or five, yeah, 500 feet extension of the boundary. If they could be a resident of the corridor, if they're in good standing with the city. Alex, you can let me know if there's any other criteria that I'm missing.
So businesses would have to be 500 from the center line of the corridor. Residents could be up to half a mile from the center of the corridor. But like Clea said, just be in good standing with the city and go through the city's vetting process to be on the board.
Great, thank you. Do we have any questions from council? Vice President Hussein.
Just with regard to that, but the majority do have to have business or ownership interest in that development district. Is that correct?
Not the majority, all would have to have some...
No, no, I'm talking about the business ownership piece as opposed to the resident piece.
Correct.
I thought it, okay.
Do we have any additional comments from council? Councilman, Councilman, Vice President Hussein?
I just want to make sure I'm, I'm understanding in terms of the tax baseline. So that will actually, that will not, we won't go back to the year of establishment. It won't be 2019.
It will be based on the year that the actual TIF district is established.
That's right, okay.
It'll be this year.
All right, fantastic.
Councilman Brown.
Thank you, and thank you so much, Ms. Washington and Alex, for being here today. Just want to say you did a great job. I remember when you first started and you were out in the community doing the surveys. And it's great to see that we've come this far and that you all have been working hard diligently to help uplift this portion of the community. So thank you so much.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
And keep doing a great job.
Do we have any additional comments or questions from council? Vice President Hussein.
I guess there's one more, I'm sorry. With regards to the community survey tool, do you have numbers? How many people actually responded to that?
Yeah, so we had about 100 respondents. And then I also have a breakdown of what that looked like as far as, I mean, residents, business, owners, et cetera, if you're interested.
Thank you so much. Send it, yeah, just send it to us.
So I appreciate you guys being here. I do have one follow-up question. I appreciate you presenting to our Development and Planning Committee meeting last week. And you mentioned sign toppers are going to be coming up soon. Now, with your 15-year projection of how much capture you're going to receive, can you tell me, like, what is your main goal? What you would like to see done with that money?
So the most part, when I first started the planning process for this, the main thing is this will be the first impression. A lot of people maybe flying into Lansing are coming from 96 would be, this is the first impression of Lansing. So it's about improving the overall aesthetic, making sure the layout operates in an effective manner. There's streetscape changes that could be, could improve the area but are very expensive, things like that. It's really the aesthetic of the corridor and also addressing the vacancy issue in that area. It's a pretty industrial corridor, but that doesn't mean it has to be a vacant corridor. There's plenty of space and opportunity in that area that business could expand.
Great. Well, thank you, and thank you for presenting this evening. That's very much appreciated.
Thank you.
Okay, we are to comments by council members and the city clerk.
Do we have any comments from council? Vice President Hussein.
Yep, so just two very quick comments. The first is that we are going to have our joint, we typically have a joint South Lansing constituent contact meeting either once or twice a year. So that's when we actually bring the second ward together with the third ward, and we discuss issues that are critical to South Lansing. And so we have, and it's not going to be the typical second Saturday of the month that we typically do, but on August 24th at 10:00 a.m. at the Plumbers and Pipefitters Hall, this is at 5405 South MLK, correct? We are going to have that, that biannual joint constituent contact meeting. We hope you can make it out. I think there's going to be just a ton of critical information shared. We will have Alex Watkins on hand to discuss. We, when we talk about the corridor for most of South Lansing that distinguishes the second to the third ward, is South MLK. And so Alex will, Mr. Watkins will be there to discuss the Corridor Improvement Authority, some encouraging developments with regards to tax capture, some partnerships in place with MDOT, with U.S. Department of Transportation, with CADA, the list goes on. Also, we will try to compile some information with regard to some really critical site-specific locations on that corridor as well. So we think of Metro Bowl, we think of Logan Square, those types of places. So we can have the latest and greatest for you. And then, of course, we have other area representatives that are typically on hand. And then we will give city council updates, general, kind of broad-based city of Lansing city council update. So we hope you can make it. Again, that's August 24th, 10:00 a.m. at 5405 South MLK. And then we did get correspondence from former councilwoman Carol Wood, who is the facilitator of rejuvenating South Lansing. Their meeting tomorrow has been canceled. There are a couple of things with facilitators that they just couldn't navigate. So they do apologize for the cancellation, but they are canceling. So mark your calendars for August 27th. That will be the next rejuvenating South Lansing meeting. That'll take place at 6:30, 6:30 p.m. at 5825 Wise Road. Thank you.
Do we have any additional comments from council? I see none. Clerk Swop?
Thank you, Mr. President. I do want to take a moment and thank Tyron Flowers, who has been our council intern for the past several months. Tonight will be her last council meeting with us, so thank you for your time and support. Also want to take a couple of minutes and talk about the upcoming election. Just want to make sure that folks are clear that the August primary does not contain a presidential office. We've had a few voters contact us. So there's the ballot that, that we have printed, that you have. There's nothing that needs to change on that. So the August election will move forward as planned, and we have plenty of time to prepare for the changes in candidates for the November election. So nothing to worry about that for that. This Saturday through the following Sunday is our early voting period. So early voting starts Saturday. And we will be at both the Foster Community Center and at the Rio Election Unit Elections Office, 1221 Rio Road. So lots of opportunities to come in in person and put your ballot into the tabulator. And even if you've been mailed an absentee ballot due to some changes in state law, you can actually bring your absentee ballot with you in person and put it into the tabulator yourself. And then if you do have an absentee ballot, we do have to, again, have it by 8:00 p.m. election night. So make sure you make plans to get that to us. You've probably got about another week, maybe a week and a couple of days if you want to use the postal mail. Otherwise, we have 14 drop boxes throughout the city. Make sure that you are using a City of Lansing Dropbox, since otherwise it's going to cause any jurisdictional problems. So one of the 14 that we have here in the city. And with that, we are to community event announcements. If anyone in the audience has a community event, we'll give you one minute to tell us the details.
So I first want to thank councilmembers Pelavonaglu and Carter for coming to the Old Everett Neighborhood's monthly meeting on July 12th. It wasn't that great of turnout, but that was kind of expected due to the rain. We do have an upcoming meeting on August 14th, that is the second Wednesday of August, again at 6:30 p.m. at the Village Lansing. That is on MLK Boulevard, 3525 South Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, Suite G. So we're still looking for a vice president, a treasurer, a secretary, and board members for the Kavanaugh and Kenan precincts. If anyone is interested in filling those positions, please attend our next meeting.
Thank you. Other community events?
Jay West, the current Churchill Down Community President. We have the Churchill Down Foot Derby that's going to be Saturday, August 10th, 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at Wayne Wright School. The event is free, but we request the racers register ahead of time. This will help us make sure we have the right T-shirt size. It will make race day easier. The registration email is on our Facebook page, Churchill Down Foot Derby's, but they can look up to find it. Thank you.
Thank you. Other community events?
Good evening. My name is Lisa Benjamin, and I am from Pilgrim Rest Baptist Church. And I'm here to talk about our free clothes, shoes, and more giveaway that's going to be held on August 24th at the church. And we'll be giving out free, new, used, gently-used clothing for men, women, and children. This event is free, open to the public, is first come, first served. We will also have vendors there from the community that will talk about mental health, dental, medical, homelessness, educational, and food programs that are available for the community. So if you would like to register, you can go to eventbrite.com and then search "Community Day of Care and Prayer." Or you can search our Facebook page on Facebook and just, you'll be able to see videos and announcements on there. Thank you.
Thank you. Other community events?
I'm Vivianne Robinson here, also on behalf of Pilgrim Rest Baptist Church. And I'd like to highlight another community service opportunity we have coming up this Saturday, July 27th, from 9:00 to 2:00. One of our ministries, the Young and Worthy Ministry, in partnership with the American Heart Association and Delta Sigma Theta sorority, will be hosting a blood drive. I'm not young, but I'm here just on behalf of the Young and Worthy. Blood donations save lives, as we know. It's essential to surgeries, national disasters, and emergencies, for example. It's also important to have a diversity of ethnicities and racial groups. And we are particularly looking for African-American donors due to some unique blood characteristics. So please share this opportunity with your friends, families, local churches, and organizations. Appointments are still available, either drop in to the church during the hours of 9:00 a.m. to 1:45 on Saturday, July 27th, at Pilgrim Rest Baptist Church, 5200 Pleasant Grove Road. Or go to the Facebook page, Young and Worthy, where you can find the flyer with a QR code to schedule. Thank you. I will leave a flyer on the table as well. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, other community events? All right, moving on then. I will announce that if you wish to make public comment on legislative matters, that includes items, item three, the public hearing, 3 through 14, on the agenda. We'll give you about another minute to sign in with Tyron in the back on a blue form. And otherwise, we are on to the mayor's comments.
Mayor Schorr.
Thank you, Mr. President. Of course, whilst I was just bringing up my tablet, I deleted the note that I had, so you get the shortened version of it today. But in case folks missed it, this morning, we had a very exciting event. I want to thank U.S. Navy Secretary Del Toro and Governor Gretchen Whitmer. This morning, they announced the naming of a naval transport, the USNS Lansing. So we are one of the first cities in recent history to get a new naval vessel named after us. It was actually very exciting. Apparently Detroit has had, and Flint and Grand Rapids, but I believe we're the only ones actually in service. So I want to thank the Secretary of the Navy for being here. And we can all be proud to know that, that the only city in Michigan with an active naval vessel is the city of Lansing. So that was pretty cool. I want to congratulate St. Andrew Dunglack for their 15th Annual Festival and Concert. It was incredible. The food was great. The music was incredible. So it was a great afternoon, or a great weekend. Additionally, congratulations to Lansing 501 for a wonderful dam jam. I know this week, we've got a few things coming up, but the one I know, I can think of offhand is our concert in the park, which this week is at Durant Park. The Kathy Ford Band will be at Durant Park. And at the same time, the West Side Neighborhood Association will be having their picnic at 7:30. So it'll be, it'll be a busy week. But I am looking forward to all the events and certainly everything that the public has shared. We have a lot going on in Lansing. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Okay, and with that, we are to public comment on legislative matters. And again, that's items 3 through 14. And item 3 is a public hearing on substantial amendment to the annual action plan for home and ARP allocation plan.
Vice President Hussein.
Sure. So the substantial amendment, sorry, that is the subject of tonight's public hearing. Essentially, it changes the home ARP budget to allow for additional home ARP funds to be channeled to the Hillsdale Place Development that's at 1020 West Hillsdale. Specifically, the amendment will increase the amount of funding for the development of rental housing from, make sure I got these numbers right, $1,539,251 to $2,102,301. This would serve as gap funding. The development, proposed development is a Lytec development. It will provide 40 units of affordable housing, including 20 units of home ARP qualifying populations, and establishes a preference for chronically homeless individuals. We did ask a few questions with regard to the 20 units for home ARP... We did ask a few questions with regard to the 20 units for home ARP qualifying populations. Those are populations that are determined to be homeless, at risk of being homeless, folks that have been victims of domestic violence and the like. And then with regard to the 20 units that will have a preference for chronically homeless individuals, it was told us that our area COC actually has a chronically homeless, kind of what they call buy list. So that's where they'll, where they will go, sorry, to vet those populations. And that's what I have on the hearing.
Okay. Our first speaker is Susan Kankrow, followed by Tim Hovey. Speakers have up to three minutes.
Good evening. Can you hear me? I'm Susan Kankrow. I'm the Executive Director at Advent House Ministries, and I first want to thank you for all the support that the City Council and the City of Lansing has given to Advent House, as we have been one of those struggling along with the issue of homelessness in our area. And as you know, homelessness is growing, unfortunately, but we are working to make it better and to solve it. I'm speaking today in support of Hillsdale Place. We will be the lead agency. We will also be providing supportive services, and we have had experience in my 30 years of doing this and many years of doing supportive housing, and know the importance of having another human being to help when your housing hasn't been stable, and you find yourself finally housed and settled, and you need somebody to give you those pointers so that it doesn't fail. So it's very, very important to have people there, not just a place to live, but a community of support. So thank you today for being there, for supporting this program, and for, by that, supporting our work with those who are struggling so hard against the economy and our housing shortage locally. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Tim Hovey, followed by Nicholas Zandi.
I'm Tim Hovey. I'm the developer of Hillsdale Place, 1020 West Hillsdale Street. And I just wanted to give you a little background on the funding night. We applied for and received home funds for this development, and we also applied for and received home ARP, ARP funds, for this development. And we're looking to streamline that. Instead of having two sources, we're looking to streamline it to have just one, the home ARP. When you have two different funding sources, there's two different monitoring processes that you have to do, and we're just trying to make it easier for the city who's going to be involved with monitoring the home ARP funds for the duration of the compliance period. So I'm hopeful to get your support and amending the plan to do that. So we essentially already have the funding. We're just, like I said, switching out home funds for more home ARP. Thank you.
Thank you. Now Nicholas Zandi, followed by Loretta Stanaway.
So I'm going to first talk briefly about the number 11 tribute in recognition of disability Pride Month. I'd say it's about time, as someone who is actually on the spectrum. I don't have visible disabilities, but I do have somewhat speaking disabilities, as you can hear from my constant stuttering. As for the rest of what I'm about to say, first, the number 13, David Hall, City Hall Building getting sold to a hotel company, I think. I've seen the visualized photo of the plan, and it looks like they're going to have to change the windows of the old police station, as far as I'm seeing, which from what I've heard previously, I think it did operate as a jail at some point, which if it still does, that would mean you would have to transfer prisoners, which I hope it still isn't. I'm not fully aware of that. But also, changing windows, as far as I know, from repairs that my dad has had to do from the house, that ain't cheap. So that's all I'm going to say about that. The rest of this, there was the whole thing of the gateway corridor improvement on number five. I want to say this about the, since it's technically connected to the presentation earlier. Honestly, I can see what they're doing, but they need to also focus on eventually looking at other parts of the city, like the south side of Lansing, which I-96 actually touches. So improvements there should be prioritized as well. And also for signs and neighborhood toppers, my neighborhood, the Old Everett Neighborhood, is lacking on that front. I mean, the, yes, we do have sign toppers, but they're, some of them are faded and are just hard to read, even with glasses, with my glasses on. So that's a huge problem. So we definitely do need some new ones. And also, we should also consider getting an actual neighborhood welcome sign, because we're a large and historical neighborhood association, and we deserve to be recognized. And so we should have an actual neighborhood welcome sign, similar what Churchill Downs and Fabulous Acres have. That's all I'm going to say, and I shall yield the last, less than 20 seconds of my time.
Thank you. And finally, we have Loretta Stanaway.
Well, I'm not going to repeat everything I said at the committee of the whole, but I will say, for the sake of the public that did not see that or hear that, that they have voted, they being the city council and the mayor and the administration, have voted or are going to yet tonight vote to accept $2.78 million for the purpose of selling the city hall and having it renovated into a hotel. And after 30 years or so of the public paying millage rates that paid the mortgage for this building, and all the intervening years of paying for its maintenance and upkeep and support in return on your investment, you are getting 6.2 days' worth of city operating funds in exchange for this building. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we are to the referral of the public hearing, the home ARP allocation.
Committee of the whole.
Okay. And we are to the consent agenda.
Vice President Hussein.
Yes, we have, let's see, five items on the consent agenda tonight. We have item number four, setting show cause hearing on orders to May say for mileage to the owners of 1342 North Hill Street. We're setting public hearing on a gateway corridor authority, building attached, and way of making your licenses number six. No law capitol for the lounge, additional license, and hours catered Sunday sale at 8:00 PM.
Oh, I'm so sorry. At 2:21 South Washington Square. We have item number seven. So again, we're looking at the consent agenda items four through eight. Number seven is a grant acceptance, which is the Financial Empowerment Center Grant, and then number eight is a grant acceptance for the Ingham County Parks and Trails Millage reallocation and contract extension. So with that, I would move the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Do we have any comments from council? Okay. All those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. All right, motion passes.
Okay. Resolutions for Action Item Nine, the appointment of Byron Haskins to the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Advisory Board.
Councilman Jackson.
Thank you. We had Mr. Haskins in our committee for the Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee, and he is applying for the DEI Committee. He came in, he told us all about himself. He's been in Lansing in and out since 1982. He was one of the first young people back in the 1960s to be selected by a JFK Diversity Equity and Inclusion Project, where they basically took kids from all around, including him from Detroit, and did different leadership and trainings and studies, it sounds like. But he was one of the first people, when he was a child then. He has many degrees in counseling. He worked with SSI, getting people on SSI. He also did various policy for the Social Security Administration, including programs, and this is his first choice. Mr. Haskins was in, and he was voted unanimously out of our committee, and I would move his appointment for the whole council. For the DEI Board of, Advisory Board, for a term to expire June of 2027.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Jackson. Do we have any questions or comments from council? Seeing none, all those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Okay. Next, we have the appointment of Terrence Frazier to the same board.
All right. We have Mr. Frazier. If you're in the building, come to the front. Mr. Frazier, he also applied for the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Advisory Board. He came into our committee and was very impressive. He has over 25 years of DEI experience, and that's a long time, considering DEI is more a recent development as far as mainstream. We asked him questions like, back 25 years ago, what did DI look like? And he, he admitted back then it was more racial lines, more black and white issues, but since then, he's been educated and on the front line for advocating for all different types of diversity and inclusion. He has been in Lansing for over 10 years. He's a business owner, co-business owner with his wife, Sweet Encounters.
Sweet Encounters?
And he's a member of our local NAACP. He also is on the Lansing Community College Board of Trustees, as well as Cole Charter School, and this was his first choice. He has many degrees related to it. He passed our committee unanimously, and I would move to approve and appoint Mr. Terrence Frazier to the Diversity Equity Inclusion Advisory Board.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any additional comments or questions from council? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. All right, motion passes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Hold on, we got to swear your hand.
Oh, yeah.
All right. You can shake your hand. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of.
Of the Office of.
Diversity Equity Inclusion Advisory Board Member.
Diversity Equity Inclusion Advisory Board Member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And before we move to the next item, Clerk Swope, I misspoke. The scheduled public hearing, the substantial amendment fiscal year 2020, 2021, annual action plan to include home ARP allocation plan, that will be referred to Development and Planning Committee, not the Committee of the Whole. Okay. With that, we are to Resolution for Action Number 11, Tribute in Recognition of Disability Pride Month. Councilman Jackson.
Thank you. If there's anybody that wants to come up for the tribute in recognition of Diversity Pride Month, maybe you have invisible or visible disability, or you want to just support, you're welcome to come to the dais, as I know there are so many people that either have diagnosed or undiagnosed or various disabilities, or different abilities, that anybody's welcome to join. Thank you. So first, before I read this tribute, I want to thank Luna for helping with the content and the drafting. She was able to enlighten me in ways that I've never known as far as the history around July as Disability Month. And I also like to thank the cosponsors of this, of this resolution, Councilwoman Pell Tanaglu and Councilwoman Carter, as they were also at the committee, helping out in our Equity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee, brings this evil. So I'll read from it. Whereas Disability Pride Month is an annual observance celebrated in July to honor the history, achievements, experiences, and struggles of the disability community. And whereas the historic Capitol crawl protest of March 12, 1990, where dozens of disability rights activists abandoned their wheelchairs and mobility aids to crawl up the steps of the U.S. Capitol, which drew national attention to the barriers faced by people with disabilities and significantly contribute to the passage of the Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA, which provides legal protections and advocates for the rights of individuals with disabilities. And whereas the first Disability Pride Day was held in Boston in July 1990, coinciding with the signing of the ADA Act on July 26, 1990, and has since grown into a month-long celebration and recognition of the diversity community's culture, history, and contributions. And whereas recognizing July as Disability Pride Month encourages public awareness, education, and dialogue about disabilities, issues, promoting a more inclusive and equitable society for all, while also providing an opportunity to reflect on the progress made in advancing disability rights, while acknowledging the ongoing work needed to eliminate barriers and ensure full participation in all aspects of life. And I'll skip that paragraph, because Luna's going to tell us about the flag itself. Now therefore be resolved that the City of Lansing hereby recognizes July as Disability Pride Month, and calls upon all citizens to observe this month with appropriate programs, activities, and events that honor the disability community and promote understanding, inclusion, and accessibility. Be it further resolved that the City of Lansing encourages the display of the Disability Pride flag during the month of July as a symbol of solidarity and celebration with the disability community. Be it further resolved that the City of Lansing reaffirms its commitment to upholding the rights of individuals with disabilities and to working towards a society that values and embraces diversity in all forms. I approve the resolution.
Okay. We have a proper motion in place. All those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. All right, motion passes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Hold on, we got to swear your hand.
Oh, yeah.
All right. You can shake your hand. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of.
Of the Office of.
Diversity Equity Inclusion Advisory Board Member.
Diversity Equity Inclusion Advisory Board Member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And before we move to the next item, Clerk Swope, I misspoke. The scheduled public hearing, the substantial amendment fiscal year 2020, 2021, annual action plan to include home ARP allocation plan, that will be referred to Development and Planning Committee, not the Committee of the Whole. Okay. With that, we are to Resolution for Action Number 11, Tribute in Recognition of Disability Pride Month. Councilman Jackson.
Thank you. If there's anybody that wants to come up for the tribute in recognition of Diversity Pride Month, maybe you have an invisible or visible disability, or you want to just support, you're welcome to come to the dais, as I know there are so many people that either have diagnosed or undiagnosed or various disabilities, or different abilities, that anybody's welcome to join. Thank you. So first, before I read this tribute, I want to thank Luna for helping with the content and the drafting. She was able to enlighten me in ways that I've never known as far as the history around July as Disability Month. And I also like to thank the cosponsors of this, of this resolution, Councilwoman Pell Tanaglu and Councilwoman Carter, as they were also at the committee, helping out in our Equity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee, brings this evil. So I'll read from it. Whereas Disability Pride Month is an annual observance celebrated in July to honor the history, achievements, experiences, and struggles of the disability community. And whereas the historic Capitol crawl protest of March 12, 1990, where dozens of disability rights activists abandoned their wheelchairs and mobility aids to crawl up the steps of the U.S. Capitol, which drew national attention to the barriers faced by people with disabilities and significantly contribute to the passage of the Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA, which provides legal protections and advocates for the rights of individuals with disabilities. And whereas the first Disability Pride Day was held in Boston in July 1990, coinciding with the signing of the ADA Act on July 26, 1990, and has since grown into a month-long celebration and recognition of the diversity community's culture, history, and contributions. And whereas recognizing July as Disability Pride Month encourages public awareness, education, and dialogue about disabilities, issues, promoting a more inclusive and equitable society for all, while also providing an opportunity to reflect on the progress made in advancing disability rights, while acknowledging the ongoing work needed to eliminate barriers and ensure full participation in all aspects of life. And I'll skip that paragraph, because Luna's going to tell us about the flag itself. Now therefore be resolved that the City of Lansing hereby recognizes July as Disability Pride Month, and calls upon all citizens to observe this month with appropriate programs, activities, and events that honor the disability community and promote understanding, inclusion, and accessibility. Be it further resolved that the City of Lansing reaffirms its commitment to upholding the rights of individuals with disabilities and to working towards a society that values and embraces diversity in all forms. I approve the resolution.
Okay. We have a proper motion in place. Do we have any additional comments or questions from council? Councilman Brown.
I'm so excited and appreciate everybody's work on this. Being an advocate my entire life, a person with disabilities, I stand in unity with everybody, and it's just a real privilege that we're truly celebrating all people and acknowledging that we have to be mindful of each other. And so just thank you so much.
All right. Thank you. Any additional comments from council? All right. We have a proper motion in place. All those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. All right, motion passes.
I want to give Luna a chance to speak, as she was instrumental in getting this passed and always a diehard advocate for what she believes in.
I think so. I'd also like to thank Wayfair and Booksellers, who donated the flag for us to fly. The, one of the big reasons this was important to me is the Disability Pride flag and Disability Pride Month often go unrecognized, really nationally, internationally. The movement started a bit later than a lot of other, thank you, a lot of other movements. So it doesn't really have the recognition. I just wanted to show the flag and kind of explain what the, what the different colors on it symbolize. So the green represents people with sensory disabilities. This can include any sensory issues, including blindness, deafness, even sensory integration disorders. The blue represents a mental disabilities and mental illness. White re- Aye. All those opposed, same sign. All right, motion passes.
I want to give Luna a chance to speak, as she was instrumental in getting this passed, and always a diehard advocate for what she believes in.
I think so. I'd also like to thank Wayfair and booksellers who donated the flag for us to fly. One of the big reasons this was important to me is the Disability Pride Flag and Disability Pride Month often go unrecognized, really nationally, internationally. The movement started a bit later than a lot of other, thank you, a lot of other movements. So it doesn't really have the recognition. I just wanted to show the flag and kind of explain what the different colors on it symbolize. So the green represents people with sensory disabilities. This can include any sensory issues, including blindness, deafness, even sensory integration disorders. The blue represents mental disabilities and mental illness. White represents undiagnosed and invisible disabilities. The gold represents cognitive, intellectual, and neurodiversity-related disabilities. And the red represents physical disabilities. It's on a black background, and the black represents mourning for the loss of people who have died from abuse, neglect, and mistreatment due to their disabilities, as well as those we've lost to the disabilities themselves. It also represents the rage and protest of our community in response to the mistreatment of people within our community throughout history. I think it's great that this will be flying outside of our city cap, city hall, right across the street from our city capitol, and from the state office buildings. Because I'm sure there are plenty of people in our state offices who have never seen this flag before. And I'm glad that this will help increase visibility and allow people to ask more questions about disabilities.
Thank you again for everything, and I hope this flies tomorrow.
Okay, we, our next item is Item 12, the electric vehicle charging station fees.
Councilman Spatterford.
Thank you, Mr. President. In front of you should be a substitute for this resolution, so I would first move the substitute.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Do we have any questions or concerns? The substitute. Seeing none, all those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, motion passes.
Okay, so the, be it further resolved in the original, use the word charges instead of charger, so it was really more of a typing error than anything, but thanks to Mark Lawrence for catching that for us. In Ways and Means, we discussed the new fees. Many of you may have noticed that we've rolled out electric vehicle chargers in all of our parking ramps. Right now, for the EV drivers, they are free, as we do not have a fee schedule established. So this resolution would set a maximum fee. The design, or the intention here is to cover the costs of running electricity and maintaining the network. So they asked for some leeway to kind of figure it out, and then we'll come back after some time and figure out what the actual structure is going to look like, because it could vary. In high-demand spots, it could be a different structure than, you know, some maybe on a different part of town where there's not a lot of commuters, but still want to make the network sustainable. So they're looking at a fee of 10 cents, up to 10 cents per minute, and up to 30 cents per kilowatt hour for Level 2 chargers, and then a combination of the two. So in the committee, we discussed possibly, you know, you pay 30 cents per kilowatt hour until your vehicle is full, and then you pay 10 cents per minute if you're what's called idling in that spot. So they're going to do that to try and make sure that they keep the network maintained and recover the cost for the city. So I would move the resolution.
All right, thank you, Councilman Spatterford. Do we have any additional comments, questions from council? I just have one question. I've been in, I rented a Tesla one time when I was out of town, and they had charging stations that had time limits. Will these, for the city, have a time limit?
So I think it's going to be dependent on, as Hal was telling us, it's going to be dependent on the spot. So if you're at a ramp downtown where someone comes in maybe to work all day, they're also talking about having maybe a special permit you buy that is, costs a little bit more a month, and you park in that spot and pay for that spot. Or if it is downtown, or in any place rather, with a time limit, you can charge until you're full, and then after you're full, they continue to charge you per minute, so you're paying for just being in that spot. So it would encourage folks to move out of those spots, and then some may have it. But one thing that we talked about in the committee that probably have to bring up in public safety is there is no penalty in law right now to occupy an EV space if you're not actively charging or an actual electric vehicle. So we'll talk about what other cities have done and bring that forward as well.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have a proper motion in place. All those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Okay, we are to Item 13, the sale of David C. Hollister Lansing City Hall Building.
Vice President Hussein.
Sorry, sure. So interest in real property per the charter can essentially come by way of two different methods. One, a affirmative vote of the electorate, or two-thirds affirmative vote of this body. So the resolution in front of us would effectuate essentially the latter. What we have is a proposed sale to Byte, the Real Estate Services LLC, again for the David C. Hollister Lansing City Hall Building. The property, this was discussed at length tonight, this property was appraised by Bell Bridge Property Advisors March 7, 2023, for $2,780,000. We talked about this building essentially being a depreciating asset, and the fact that in 2015, it did appraise at about $4.2 million, and 2021 at about $3.5, and then last March at $2.8 million. The proposed sale is for the appraised amount of $2,780,000. Byte, Byte, the Real Estate Services, and this is actually baked in the resolution, will not be seeking public financial incentives for its redevelopment of City Hall into a hotel. We did have a public hearing on July 8. We received a lot of input, I think both for and against, in terms of the folks that are support, a lot of discussion on kind of unlocking the commercial viability of this, bringing it fully out of the tax rolls and the like. Folks that opposed seemed to be centered on sale price, maybe a desire for a new appraisal. And then there was some discussion about the viability of another hotel downtown. Proposed hotel would include a 183 rooms, a restaurant, retail space, onsite access for pickup and drop-off, meeting rooms, a fitness center, 60 onsite parking spots, and then another 100 offsite parking spots that would be part of an arrangement with the city to be brokered at another date. Hotel predevelopment activities are being proposed from summer 2024 to February of 2026, with construction beginning spring of 2026 and completing at some point in the summer of 2027. But again, the resolution in front of us pertains to the sale of City Hall. So with that, I would move the resolution.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Do we have any additional comments or questions from council? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. All right, motion passes.
Okay, we are to ordinances for passage. We have an ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan, readopting the codified ordinances of the City of Lansing, throughout a second time by its title. The ordinance was reported from the Committee of the Whole and is on the order of immediate passage.
Vice President Hussein.
Yep, so we had, again on this, we had a public hearing on July 8. We did not receive any public input one way or the other. This is something we've been doing in terms of an annual exercise back to, I believe, 2018. So again, we do this every year, and with that, I would move the readoption of the codified ordinances.
All right, thank you. Do we have any additional comments from council? Okay, this is a roll call vote. Clerk Swol.
Councilmember Pelvina Gu. Councilmember Spatterford. Councilmember Brown. Councilmember Carter. Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Cost. A, A's, zero N's, the ordinance is adopted.
President Garza would move for immediate effect.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Any concerns, questions from council? Seeing none, all those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. All right, motion passes for immediate effect.
Okay, we are to Speaker Registration for Public Comment on City Government-Related Matters. That's the yellow sheet in the back. We'll give you about another minute to sign in with Tyren. And in the meantime, we're to report referrals, reports of city officers.
Vice President Hussein.
Would move all, I would, I'm sorry, I would move that all items be considered as read in full, and appropriate referrals be made by you, President Garza.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Any additional comments from council? Seeing none, all those in favor, please state by saying aye. All those opposed, same sign. All right, motion passes.
Okay, we have, from the Clerk, Minutes of Boards and Commissions.
Place on file.
Grant acceptance, 2023 Municipal Facilities Infrastructure Election Grant.
Ways and Means.
And 2024 Enhancement Grant for Facilities to Support Election Administration.
Committee of the Whole.
Board of Waterlight Proposed Electric Water, Steam, and Chilled Water Rate Changes.
Committee of the Whole.
From the Mayor, Appointment of Hannah Jones Nelson to the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Advisory Board.
Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion.
Payment in lieu of taxes, two items regarding Genesee Senior Apartments.
Development and Planning.
Grant acceptance for HUD community projects sponsored by U.S. Representative Slotkin to support the development of a new publicly-owned music and arts venue.
Ways and Means.
Traffic control orders, parking prohibition between 2:00 a.m. and 5:00 a.m. on Westchester and East Westchester Roads.
City Operations.
Board of Waterlight Return on Equity Agreement Amendment.
Committee of the Whole.
And two items for Brownfield Plan Number 81, Amendment Number 1, Neogen Expansion.
Development and Planning.
Communications and Petitions. We have Liquor Control Commission Notice, Perronaya's Inc. transferring license at 200 South Martin Luther King Jr.
City Operations.
Communication from David Ellis and Objection to the Michigan Avenue redesign.
Public Safety.
Communication from 20 people in support of quality-of-life policing.
Public Safety, and place on file.
And update from Representative Hope about the recently approved state budget funding.
Place on file.
We are to remarks by councilmembers.
One second. Number 17, grant acceptance should be Committee of the Whole. That's what I said. Oh, I guess I misspoke and said Committee of the Whole. It is Ways and Means.
Remarks by councilmembers.
Do we have any additional remarks for council? Seeing none.
Okay, remarks by the mayor.
Mayor Shore.
I just, a few quick ones, because I forgot these, and I wanted to mention it. For all that don't know, we've had three great events over the last week. Salt Rock Pub is now open downtown, where the old Veal and Flowers was wonderful. I was there, it was great. If you haven't had a chance to go yet, the Irish Pub is once again open on the west side. And I know for anybody who's been in Lansing for a while, you remember the Irish Pub. And we were there, and it was, it was great. So it was great to see that place open for the west side. And Southeast Lansing, we had a wonderful unveiling of the new Welcome to Lansing sign. It is gorgeous. It's, they're too large on either side, down at Dunkle and by Collins. So in Councilman Garza's ward, and that was another great achievement. So lots of great things going on in the City of Lansing, and thank you all for the sale of City Hall. I'm real excited. The three on this side already teased me that certainly my comms director's watching, and we put a statement out already. You all were thanked in the statement, I promise. But we're excited to get moving. So thank you all for your deliberation and support.
All right, thank you, Mayor Shore.
Okay, with that, we are to Public Comment on City Government-Related Matters. Speakers have up to three minutes to address the city council. We'll start with Loretta Stanaway, and then Jody Washington.
Well, hate to be a Debbie Downer, but in spite of the hurrah's about the exciting things happening in the city this week, this weekend, we had four people shot over two days in the city limits. So there's that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jody Washington, and then Nicholas Zandi.
Thank you. I wrote this down because this is so incredibly important to me. I am Jody Washington. I'm an Eastern graduate, and I live on the property directly adjacent to the Old Eastern High School. I am a mental health patient. I suffer from chronic severe clinical depression and have my entire life. I am treated and Medicaid for the condition, and so far, I have survived the disease. Many others have lost their battle with these diseases, with this disease, and many other mental health disorders. We also have people needing to navigate autism and other non-typical neurodivergent conditions. It is apparent to me that in this city, we do not place the same importance on mental and behavioral health care as we put on other members of our community. I'm so upset about this. As far as I'm aware, we have no one on the DEI committee that represents us. We, and suffers from these conditions. We have recently had an elected official attack the mental health of a constituent, and we are now battling over a building. I am here to advocate for myself and others who need mental and behavioral health care, and for those that have, those that love them. Because of the stigmatism still associated with mental and behavioral health, we don't typically advocate well for ourselves. We have a mental and behavioral health crisis in this country, and the U of M has given Lansing a huge opportunity to address some of it right here, and to give some of us equity. I am begging the city leadership to stop battling the saving of the Eastern High School building and make people a priority over brick and mortar. The building architecture is that of the early 1900s collegiate Gothic style as a nod to the educational system. If people wanted to fight for this building, it should have been done years ago. Not only is the building not appropriate for therapeutic activities, the safety of the patients or the safety of the staff, the facade itself is counter to what is needed for therapeutic setting. Frankly, it is reminiscent of what people called it in an insane asylum of the early 1900s. A new building can be tabled for the proper therapeutic environment, and can be made for the health and for the dignity of the people that need it. You all say you care about mental health and diversity and equity. You're the same people that stood up here tonight cheering the disability flag, and you're the same ones that voted that you wanted to save an historic building. Don't talk out both sides of your mouth. We need this, we need to move forward, and I would beg you to stop this obstructive behavior with your resolutions and your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Nicholas Zandi, followed by David Ellis.
First things first, I want to thank Councilmember Jackson for inviting me to stand in the well for the dedication to Disability Pride Month. It is, it was such an honor to represent those who don't have that visible of a disability, but though it may not look like I have one, I in fact do have a few. For one, I am nearsighted, which is why I'm wearing these glasses, and I'm also, I also have speaking disabilities, which, which because of that, I stutter quite a lot. So pardon me whenever I speak in this. But I want to go further on this. This is about the Charter Commission. Recently, they were speaking about the second section, which is actually where the elective positions are. I want to speak what I'm advocating for, and what a lot of people are advocating for, and that is the increase in number of wards and the abolition of the at-large positions. We are the only city that, a major city in the City of Lansing that, in the state of Michigan, again, stutter, pardon that, is that has half at-large, half wards. The only other that has a lot of at-large is Kalamazoo, which is all at-large, which is even worse than our situation, but still. And because of that, it leads to certain parts of the city getting overrepresented. Again, previously, it was the fourth ward, now it's the second ward. And so because of that, it leaves so many people underrepresented. Look at the first ward, for example. It doesn't really currently have anyone who's currently from that ward. So that's a huge issue. So we need to seriously consider getting rid of the at-large. I've actually provided the Charter Commission, as well as the public, with a few ideas I have for ward maps, if we are to increase the number of wards. A lot of that was sourced from some of the precinct maps that the city clerk's office actually provided me via email. I want to thank the clerk's office for that. And so I decided to draw the wards that I think would work the best for, if we're going to go to a certain amount of wards. I would recommend either seven, eight, or nine would be probably the best possible scenario for this. Nine being, nine wards possibly being the best scenario, because now every part of the city gets actual representation, and no one is underrepresented. In fact, my neighborhood, the Old Ever neighborhood, which is a neighborhood association I run, it's big enough that it could act as a ward in its own right if we are to go for nine wards. And I'm sure there's other parts of the city that are like that, too. So that's all I want to say, and I shall yield the last few seconds of my time.
Thank you. Next, we have David Ellis, and then- Next, we have David Ellis and then Thomas Kweku.
Hi, David Ellis, downtown resident. So just roughly about a year ago, I was here before council where I was listing off statistics from the recently posted Michigan State Police crash report data. And last year, I had made the statement that pedestrian and cycling accidents in the state of Michigan increased in 2022 by about six and a half percent. So this year's is 11%. So we have not only continued to increase in crashes in the state of Michigan, but the amount we have increased is growing faster and faster. And so of course, us being the capital of the state, having to do with the best representation we can, increased by 31% since last year. So for every three people that were hit by a car in the City of Lansing last year, four people were hit in 2023. I, 2022 to 2023, let's just say I did that right. So what are we doing here? We, we have the tools. We have, we, like on the city's website, there are pages dedicated talking to how we can fix this. We have the, the operation slowdown, which is in place for us to fix roads. We understand how to, how to come to solutions on this. And we just, we just don't. Why? Why not? Why, why do I come here before you guys and talk about this? Why do I go through this effort of compiling data and looking through statistics to figure out what like, where are the problem areas? What roads do we need to look at? I just came back from a trip, I took a couple trips. I was in Chicago and it was beautiful, it was wonderful. They are so far ahead of us and it's insane. And they're ahead of us with doing things like putting paint on the ground, like really simple, cheap fixes that have proven to improve stuff. And I went to Ann Arbor, same thing, really cheap fixes that we know how to do and we don't. And Kalamazoo and Jackson, Michigan are light years ahead of us. It is everyone but us. We are just choosing not to fix these things. I would really hate a year from now to be back before you guys to once again have this exact same conversation of what are we doing here? I know we're just beginning to make some marginal improvements with things like, I saw the pedestrian islands being proposed for Martin Luther King Boulevard, well, on the south side of Martin Luther King, and that's fantastic. We're doing these tiny things when we need to be looking at every single intersection, every crosswalk, every road. We need to be thinking bigger picture and we're not thinking. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker tonight is Thomas Kweku.
Good evening to all of you council members and also citizens. Father, we thank you so much for this opportunity that we have to convene together with you and each other. Thank you, Lord Jesus, you'll be glorified and Holy Ghost, you'll speak and your words, Lord, will be heeded for the benefit of all in Jesus' almighty name. I'm here tonight because it's impressed strongly upon my heart to give a message to you city council. The Lord Jesus Christ says you must gunder, you must govern under him and like him. As I've been here tonight and hearing the various sundry problems that are taking place in this city, the government, Scripture says, is under the Lord. He's the governor among all nations. I commend your efforts, but man cannot solve man's problems. It's only the creator of mankind that can rectify the ills that exist amongst people. In this city, there's, there have been many fentanyl deaths, especially on the south side. The legalized use of marijuana, though trying to, trying to accommodate many, has resulted in many youth and even older people being, becoming harmed greatly, disabled so to speak in their minds. Even government assistance has incapacitated many and capacitated many and increased people's indolence and which also results in the economic downturn of a city. Scripture says however in Isaiah 9:7, that in the increase of Christ's government, there shall be peace. The ills that man cannot correct Jesus Christ through his death on the cross, his shed blood and resurrection can correct. We've seen people, my heart goes out to the dear lady who spoke of disabilities and others who spoke of traumatic conditions. We've seen Christ Jesus rectify these things. So there must be government under him, for only he created man and knows how to govern correctly man into victory and triumph. Lastly, Christ says you must govern like him. The government that we Christians experience with, under Christ, is a government of love. We respond to him and reciprocate his love because we saw it demonstrated. Romans 5:8 declares, "God commandeth or showeth his love towards us." That Christ Jesus died for us while we were sinners. We respond not out of coercion or fear, but of love, seeing his generosity. And the constituents in this city will likewise respond when they see the government is not being done for power. I'm not saying it is, but when they see it's not being done for power, position, or any other ulterior motive, but for their well-being temporally and eternally, there'll be a greater response. Disabilities can be healed by Christ, helped by even the work of others. Many of these problems can be corrected, but city council, you will have to govern under Christ and like him with the love and his power for things to be turned around in this city. May the Lord bless you all.
All right, thank you. See no further business, we are adjourned.